Good morning. It's October 24th. We're at the Umatilla Chamber of Commerce for a work session. Meeting is called to order. And we have a presentation today on the Electronic Boat Examination Reporting System. We have our Boating Safety Manager, Brian Paulson, and Marine Law Enforcement, Marine Law Enforcement Training Coordinator, Eddie Persicetti. So the floor is yours.
Morning Chair Jackson, members of the board. For the record, I'm Brian Paulson, Boating Safety Program Manager for the Oregon State Marine Board. And I have my colleague here, Eddie Persicetti, Law Enforcement Training Coordinator. We are really excited to talk about a project that came into full implementation this year. It's really brought a lot of efficiencies to boating safety. And we would like to start off by talking about where we started. I am going to hand that forward over to Eddie.
Thank you, Brian. For the record, my name is Eddie Persicetti, Training Coordinator for the Oregon State Marine Board. I appreciate your time this morning. This has been a huge lift for the Marine Board and law enforcement. So I'm going to backtrack a little bit. And if you have any questions at all to this presentation, just ask. We're going to give you a tremendous amount of information in a short amount of time. So please, Eddie, point. Don't even have to raise your hand, just ask a question for best answer. So the eBIR app, for those of you that may not know, BIR is Boating Examination Reports. And if you rewind five years ago, it was almost a competition amongst our law enforcement partners in the sense that they wanted to get as many BIRs as they possibly could. And Brian and Larry might remember that we would get pictures or email to us of stacks of pink BIRs. And when I say pink BIRs, this was a BIR book. And this is what law enforcement used to contact a voter on Oregon's waterways. And they would fill their form out right there, J.C. Erick Partners. The voter would get the pink slip. Then, I'm sorry, the voter would get their white slip. Law enforcement would retain the pink slip. And then at the end of summer, they would have stacks of these papers. They would get down to us and instead of we would get them and say, okay, that's great. Thank you very much for your service and good job in getting 300 of your BIRs. So it was presented to Brian, myself, and the Boating Safety Program Manager at the time to try and create an app where we could go from this to this. So we sat down, Brian and myself, and we said, okay, well, how do we do this? We're going to explain to you that process of how we did it. So basically, the BIR and the program that we use is RGIS. And what happened is when we were presented this project, I had the same question that you might have just asked yourselves. What is RGIS? I personally had no idea. So RGIS, it's the world's leading mapping software. And RGIS basically is a company, a global company called ESRI. And they have geographic information system software implemented in which they can map out things all over the world. And this is the gas and pipeline, information and infrastructure, you name it, they do it. So the state of Oregon has a contract with RGIS. And we have somebody in house, Joe Stevenson. And Joe has built this one to ground up and working together with us. And he has done a phenomenal job and continues to do so. So that is what this program is. So what would replace the eBIR BIRs? In 2022, we had a beta program with an eBIR app. And we had certain counties that were testing this program. And we didn't push it out to all 32 counties. It was basically Jackson, Clackamas counties. And he said, hey, let's test this out in the field, get as much information as we can and see if this works. And then when we went to the GRER program that we use now, that data is still held. So we can go before 2022 and collect all the information if we're asked, especially if we public comment. So that's good. We still have that in the cloud. And now it's utilized, it's what we call the Oregon eBIR FM, FM, standard field maps. And we'll get into that in a second. And then we have what's called the dashboard. And Brian is really going to kind of dissect the dashboard for you and show you what we can evaluate and what data we can extract. And we have the daily dashboard, the data evaluator. We can look at specific numbers, we can look at PFD statistics, and not only that, but from a training component, we have resources available for law enforcement where they can scan QR code to get all the information they need to download these apps. And that was a really big challenge. If we pushed it out to law enforcement, it's not as everybody has iPhones, right? It's not everybody has iPhones. We're working with IT department. So basically, we said, hey, download this app. And we pushed this out to up to 100 people. And they had to work with their IT departments to make sure it cleared all the regulations and requirements from a security component. So the challenges go on and on.
So who, what did you do with all the paper BIRs that you had? Are those integrated into the electronic system in some way?
Yes. So that's a good question though. So the paper BIRs, so from 2022 with the electronic app, that data is still accessible in the cloud. The paper BIRs prior to, all the information was entered into our OSBO database. So that's how we get that information. So I would step back just one second. So 2021 is when we ran our pilot project in Jackson and Clackamas. 2022, when we rolled out the eBIR system to our LE partners, not only embraced it. And the caveat was last year in 2022, they still have to enter the BIR numbers into our OSBO database. Now, historically to this system, they would have to enter the BIRs in annually. So the administrative burden is fairly significant. They would come back from a marine patrol. They might spend an hour, hour and a half every day manually entering these BIRs into our, we'll just say, our older system. And we realized that to go a long time, or they would have an administrative person at their agency manually. But those are quite honestly, we had staff at one time at the Marine Board that were inputting those boat examination reports. So the administrative burden was fairly significant, which we've seen with our law enforcement partners. A lot of their time in the water has slowly decreased because of administrative burden. It's not just administrative burden for our program, you know, training that they have, all the additional things in the law enforcement community. So this, this was our way to take away that administrative burden, or at least decrease it. And we can go back and look at any of the BIR data that was manually put in the 2022 system from last year. Those are all there. And then going forward, and Eddie can keep talking about that, it's all there at the fingertips.
So no double entry anymore?
No double entry. And that, that's the one thing that we realized was just a huge time burden. Yeah, we heard it all the time as far as that way. And then we totally understand when they were entering this information three times. I mean, we heard it consistently. And that was the biggest takeaway was how can we make their job this year? And I remember we would go for write-ups and they'd be filling this out. We should be blowing the wind, you know, and trying to handle it. And they would blow off into the waters like, oh, this is, we can do that. And this was a huge step in that direction. So the eBIR system overview, this is a little bit of a snapshot right off of our cell phone. It's actually, the advantages are paperless, so no more paper, geospatial data collection. So basically, when they open up this app, it automatically tags their location exactly where they are. And that also works if they don't have reception. And this is the biggest takeaway for me personally in working with law enforcement, this public accountability. Because if you rewind five years ago, it was almost the opposite. So we get this all the time, especially in bodies of water that are subjected to problems and conflict. Is we get the phone call and it says, I haven't seen law enforcement or nobody's out here. And then, I kid you not, this, this happened as I was getting that phone call. I went on to the eBIR dashboard. And in three minutes, there was contact two miles down river from where this person was calling. So it's a public accountability where we can say, as a matter of fact, they are out there. And this is when they've been out there, this is how many contacts and citations, PFDs, you name it. We can pull it from the dashboard and give that to the public and say, as a matter of fact, this is true. This is what's going on. This is what's happening. So that public accountability piece is just tremendous, absolutely tremendous. So this is a snapshot right here. It might be a little bit difficult to see with the distance up there. But basically what happens is it automatically populates on their iPhones, their marine patrol units. They can save their favorites, so their name, for example. It would come up as far as the county, say, for example, Clackamas County, all the water bodies will auto-populate. And then they would come up motorized or non-motorized, mention the OR number. And then all the information is saved automatically. And we'll show you video here shortly. And they put that information in and hit send and boom, goes right to the dashboard instantly.
And does a voter get to get a copy of that?
So they don't. And that was one of the pushback components, good question, is the voter, from what we heard, likes to get the paper copy, right? But they just don't get the paper copy right now. And that's, that's, that is what it is. They give sticker though, that's the trailer, right? So they get the BIR sticker for the back of their bill, which shows the county and the year 222324, which is color-coded to the registration stickers of that year. So that's, that's what they get. If they fail, they can, they'll know why they failed. And usually law enforcement will give their phone number, say, hey, when you get your number fixed or when you get your registration or whatever the case might be, just call and we'll take care of it. And we'll give you a pass through. Though, three years ago, that was a pushback, the paper BIR, but now you really don't hear it. So this is field maps, and this is, this is tremendous. So Field Maps is another program they can open up on their phone. And the problem we were having was there was no way for counties to communicate with each other. So basically, if somebody...
Can we enlarge that a little bit for us older people with hard times? See larger screen so I can read.
Done for a second here. I can't relax.
If you can, that's fine. Can you hear it at the top part?
I have.
I didn't bring my stuff.
Huh?
Lily, just... Go ahead, I'm sorry. I'm just holding a paper, Craig, I can hardly read it. Maybe I don't know. It's good.
So Field Maps is another program we introduced to law enforcement. This was introduced at this past Marine Academy, the 2023 Marine Academy. And the challenge was there was no way for contracted law enforcement partners to basically communicate with each other, go into a system to extract information in which they might have contacted the voter somewhere else in the states. So for example, if a voter was contacted here in Umatilla County and they were given a warning, there was no way that Baker County could know that. So what's great about Field Maps is there's a search engine. And all the information entered in survey 123 and Field Maps is stored. And law enforcement can go into Field Maps, go into the search engine, type in first name, last name, or OR number. And then they can in fact see if this person was contacted in Umatilla County or wherever across the state. So for the first time that I'm aware of, the history of our law enforcement contracts with the Marine Board, is now they literally have a search engine where they can, again, all that public accountability piece to see if in fact this person was given a warning or citation, or if they had a passing BIR, whatever the case is. And this has been a huge tool at the field. And what's even fuller about this is it auto-populates with special rules and regulations. So with our special emphasis projects across the state, and we have one upcoming in Tillamook County. If we have somebody coming up Douglas County to assist Tillamook, and they don't know a specific rule, say, on the Williston River, they can open up eBIR FM or Field Maps, auto-populates the information, geo-tagged where they are. And you can see the purple highlighted section of the river right there. That means that there's a special rule. They click on that and there's all specials pertaining to that body of water. So law enforcement can now know what the rule regulations are.
Is this linked to the interactive maps that you guys are making?
I'm sorry, Greg.
Is this linked to the interactive map that the board meeting?
Member with you, this, this program, it requires logging credentials. So it is not public facing. Just from a security standpoint, that's, that's something that we do.
Yeah, good, good question. And we had to make sure that this meant security parameters. For example, we don't have to put dates in there, you know, we can't do that.
However, the, the map layer that shows the rules is the same layer that you would see on the public facing vote Oregon online map.
It would be nice, so if you could, law enforcement could put information in about instructions or whatever that would link into your, your BIR.
Member with you, we actually have an instructions reporting out that LE, when they, when LE reports, it actually automatically puts it on the map. All right. The only ones that we have to verify is public submitted instructions.
Yeah, so it actually, it says it up there that the few map layers, boating instructions, access sites, river miles, boating regulations, boated waterways, and this is real time. So when there's an update, we can update it automatically. And actually, someone just called me yesterday and they found something with the eBIR app. And I'm going to work with Joe here either today or tomorrow. And Joe should be able to fix that immediately. So that's what's so great about this technology is it's instant. So what are the advantages of the eBIR system overview? As we said, there's no duplicate entry anymore with past valid warning or valid citation on the database. So all of the information is entered right into the app and that's it. There's no more daily totals for passing BIRs, inspections, or required to enter SFSTs. None of that has to be entered in the OSBO database. And the daily activities for activity, water body, fleet hours are still required to be entered in the OSBO database. So there's still some specific information such maintenance, boat maintenance, that they have to enter into the OSBO database that we have not integrated into the eBIR system. But as Brian was saying, administrative burden that we heard consistently from LE has been eliminated, which is, which is fantastic. So, and this is a map right here that we pulled off of the eBIR system where you can see how many contacts across the state. Last I checked, we got over 35,000 voting contacts logged in the eBIR system in six months. In six months, yeah, that's not even the calendar year. That's in the past six months, it's basically what it did when it launched at Academy. So it's pretty impressive. And then when you zoom in, you'll see this later on our presentation, you can flip on one of those dots that shows you who made contact, gives you the OR numbers, location, time, the whole nine yards. So it's pretty exciting. These were the counties that assisted us. So we called it the super user group. And basically, when we started building this from the ground up, we had Jackson and Clackamas were beta testing it. We got their programs, we basically merged them. We, we, we found out what worked and what didn't work. And then we created the super user group. And we looked at the entire state as a whole. We tried to get all four corners in central Oregon involved and metro area. But Jackson, Clackamas, Clackamas, Multnomah, Lynn, Baker, Lincoln, and OSB helped us as well with this technology in developing the eBIR system. And what was really important about some of these counties, especially Clackamas, Baker, and even Jackson, was lack of cellphone reception. So we wanted to make sure if they didn't have cellphone reception that this app would still work. And that was a massive challenge at Academy. As you're aware, we host Academy, we have like Billy Shino, there's no cellphone reception. So again, Joe at OSMB, Joe was able to create a map that we could download of like Billy Shino in the classroom when we had Wi-Fi. And then we were able to use that map when we went down to the lake. And then once all of the eBIRs were logged, all like Billy Shino got to the top of the hill, a current voter, they were sent in to get cellphone reception. And my phone blew up. I mean, I was absolutely amazed, salesmen with dots popping up. And it was, it was a pretty exciting moment for me as a training coordinator that this worked and this will work. So, but I really appreciate the help of those counties listening right there. Because we had meetings once a month and it was non-stopping. It worked. And this is a great example. This is Debbie Dion Blake, I believe that's actually me, Tarek, when he was helping Tillamook last year. But you can see the OR numbers, and we see this a lot, is there's a 20 sticker in the front that looks like an 07 sticker in the back of the OR number. But if you notice what Dion is holding, he's holding his cellphone. And that's not because he's texting family and friends. He's using the eBIR app right there to put that information in and log it and get that gentleman's information, in which he then gave that gentleman his cellphone number. And said, once we get this fixed, call me. He gave him a warning and that gentleman reached out to Dion in the back and we were able to get it straight done. So that's a good example right there of what can be done. And he smiled. So that makes me like, yeah.
So the, the eBIR system is primarily used by LE. Is it utilized at all by the VSA?
That's a great question. So if Brian can elaborate more on that.
And maybe you're going to go into that later.
Yes, it is. So the VSA's have a separate dashboard.
Okay.
Same technology, same layout of the app. But that, their information they enter is on their dashboard. They don't agree with law enforcement dashboard.
Yeah, great, great question. I actually did put VSA dashboards at the end of this presentation, just because I wanted to touch on that. One, it's a newer program. We developed it in July, and I'll definitely go into detail and give a good overview. One thing we wanted to do is show a quick video. And the purpose of this video is to see how easy it is for law enforcement to use the app when they're making voter contacts. So first off, they're, they're a boat operator. So they got to operate the boat, they got to talk to the other voter, they got to input the information into the phone. And this is a good representation of just how seamless that process is.
Hey there, how are you? Hey, so I'm with the sheriff's office, everything's audio, video recorded while we talk. Oh, just saying, everything's audio, video recorded while we talk. How was the boat trip? You just not making a motor run or testing the motor out? Not much going on today? No. Well, you been getting any silvers?
Uh, I got two.
Yeah. Right on. I didn't see that. Do you have a life chucking in there with you somewhere?
Yeah, right here, right inside.
Oh, do you mind, I can't see it. Do you mind just holding up for me real quick? Okay, I got you. All right, thank you. You got it. No worries, no worries. And then you got a horn or a whistle on there somewhere? I see it now. Awesome. Nice work. All right.
All right, thank you for your service.
You got it. You take care. Just got to get your number off here real quick.
That process historically would have been a piece of paper. However long it would have taken to complete that piece of paper, hand it over to voter. But also then we had to come back. Law enforcement or somebody administratively would have had to input that into our system and then potentially nail them in. So you can think of the tiny savings just on that one voter contact. Times that by 35,000 that we did over the last six months and it's definitely a huge burden paid off for our law enforcement partners. Yeah, actually, we should go back for the second part. Thank you.
And the, we've had some feedback. And I've been having law enforcement where it's public, it's like, well, what are you doing on your phone? Right. Because I mean, it looks like you're texting somebody. And they say, well, we're actually getting your information right now, we're returning to our, our system. And that's, that's the end of it. But this was a picture of Academy in Matress. And I was slightly nervous because cell phones and docks usually don't mix well, right? So everybody's an adult, we have to remind people, I'm totally dropped. But this was a big epiphany moment for the training program where I could look down the dock and there's six or seven boats set up, just like that one on the right, and they're BIR boats. So these are BIR stations, more or less. But I remember being at the lakeside of that dock and looking down and there was maybe 20 people and they had their phones out. And that's when if you were testing the system and I had Joe on standby and like, this is amazing. This is working right now. So boat ramps are a great way for law enforcement, if they're uncomfortable with the app at first, to just start making contacts. And again, the goal is to start here and then move to where Sergeant Thompson is, where you navigate a boat safely and make a contact. And also there's programs that have MSOs, marine safety officers, seasonal help. And the MSOs are, are putting the information in on the phone right there. And another component too is you can write this information down. So if you're, if you're in a really busy section of water and you're not comfortable using your phone, that's fine. There's still people that have notepads, they write the information down, they can actually go back to their office. They can put the information in the eBIR app, they can change the body of water where they're at because it going to geo-tag. So if it would geo-tag this building, what happens out there, making a contact, I can manually put that information in the eBIR app, including the date and the time. And then that's written that way. So we kind of cover all the bases right there as far as what works for folks.
But when you're out in the field, it automatically does date, timestamp, so that saves more time.
Exactly, yeah. We had a marine deputy this last summer that contacted me because they had cellphone issues. Either battery, and they just manually wrote the things down to that date. And then they didn't lose that day worth of work and they went back. You can set a desktop and input a voter contact very quickly and adjust the time and date and also the location very quickly. So it has a redundancy, you know, if somebody goes out there and something's going on their cellphone or, and you know, we, we have a way to, to put a voter contact in a different, you know, different desk option. Yeah, and then that super user group, most of them are highly involved with the training program, Jackson, Clackamas, Multnomah. And we kept that in mind because they're at, we won at Academy. So when we introduced this app, added Academy to the new marine deputies. They're in the classroom so they can help me go from phone to phone to phone and make sure these apps are downloaded, they're working properly. And so that's, that was a big tremendous help there in classroom enforcement academy.
Does this app allow sharing information with other states?
I don't know. If it doesn't, then that's, that's a great question. So if you rewind to June, I believe when we were like Tahoe?
Well, I guess member with the sharing the voter contact information. It's so, there's a couple of things. We, we could share information. So for example, Multnomah County reached out to us and they wanted to have downloaded data tables of their information and sent to them specific. We can actually do that. And if we wanted to share certain levels of information with other state agencies, maybe, and I'll get into that in the dashboards, we have the ability to, to certain levels. And we can restrict it. So there's...
Well, you know, I was curious, if you have a voter on the Columbia on the Washington side that's misbehaving, is there a way to communicate with your Oregon side, letting know?
I would, I would be inclined to say that probably isn't going to be something necessarily we see in future, future use. I will say that there is a lot of other states that are very interested in this system. In fact, the US Coast Guard themselves are very interested in the system based on our performance, which I'll, I'll get, get to later on in this presentation. Because it, it really amplifies the amount of voters you can contact, which it returns can reduce incidents of fatalities when we're out there doing the interregime. So the point of us sharing it with a neighboring state on bordering water, not likely. But if, if say, Washington wanted to see what kind of data we had on voter contacts with Washington registration numbers, we could easily filter that out and submit it to them. Say, ODFW wanted to have some boating related information on waterway use, on motorized boats, we could easily give that information. So there is value in the data for other agencies that we could filter out to make sure that we're not violating any public record.
Sure. You know, as of now, they don't have access to our system per se. And again, Brian, Eddie mentioned that every county has a different login. So they all have their own password for a login. We were in Lake Tahoe for a Western State voting conference and presented this system to pretty much every state in western Mississippi. And the feedback was just tremendous. I mean, they couldn't believe what we were doing. Because one of their biggest challenges was just trying to get the data when they contact voters, especially they want to get that information to the Coast Guard and they were having struggles doing it. And we said, hey, here's this technology that might be available in your state. Might be under contract already. Here's what we deal with. It was just fantastic conversations to be had, thinking of these things. That was exciting. So the success of this program, this, when we launched this, it really opened up excellent communication, especially states out here in eastern Oregon. It's difficult for us to get out here and interact with states just with the busy summer voting season. But when we pushed this out, it really made counties contact us. And, and a lot of those conversations I had was, I don't know how to work this cellphone. This is ridiculous. I'm, I'm too old for this stuff. It's like, no, you're not. You're not, you're not too old for this. We'll work through it. Don't get it angry. And then we worked them through it and it was phenomenal. So I really embraced the relationships that were going to use this technology. Droids and iPhones, I'm an iPhone user. We have iPhones for work. I don't know anything about droids. So for me, going around from phone to phone to phone and figuring out how this technology worked, I mean, that was a big takeaway. And I appreciated that. When we introduced this, officer safety is always number one and safety generally speaking as a vote. We introduce this officer safety is always number one and safety generally speaking as a voter is always number one. So how can we launch this app? How can we make sure people use it the proper way? And use it the safe way. And again, Sergeant Thompson was a great example right there of just a little stand. Um, right there by his window, making a contact. If you notice, he didn't tie up to a boat. They never tie up to voters as far as officer safety. So. But it also added a component into the marine academy. But it's okay, this is now a thing. So we have to kind of change our parameters right now. It's how we make voter contacts while using this app. So. Um, this was asked a couple of weeks ago, but I believe now we've broken thirty five thousand voter contacts. Which is tremendous. But as Brian was saying, that's in the past six months, that's both motorized and non-motorized. Um, and we bridged it back for multiple voter contacts, meaning. Again, as I explained, using field maps. Folks can go in, extract information to see if someone was contacted already. So now for the first time in history, the Marine Board. HCs can communicate with each other through field maps. And we always have fluid improvements innovations. I can remember with you could call me right now if you're using things to say, hey, I don't like this. Uh, can you put some fields out to see if anyone is having trouble? And I will. And then I'll work with Joe and we'll try and fix it. So it is, it's it's constant innovation and it's constantly changing. Uh, and it's just been an absolutely phenomenal program and I'm excited to be using it. Um, and it's been wonderful. Any questions?
So this program, uh. It's copyrighted protected, I presume?
That's that's a good question, remember with the I I sue. You know, same with the, I would, I don't necessarily think it's copyright protected. So. Mesri, ArcGIS, it's an international platform that probably honestly. I would say probably the majority of government agencies use. Uh, building this app within the the basically. Software that ESRI provides to the Marine Board through a uh enterprise wide type contract. Um, isn't necessarily copyrighted. It's. It's actually um something that could be adaptable to other states. They'd really just have to go and change like the logins. The water bodies, the mapping layers. I will tell you that. That all the layers that are built into this from the the waterways, you know, across Oregon, those vector files going down to the the um. Specific rules, right? You know, we have the rule layers. Those those took years to to get to where they are. Um, but there's nothing that would be copyrighted this. There's, there's other uh. You know, national resource agencies out there across the US that use this for. Maybe fish habitat surveys. They might use it for fire hydrant inventories. We just looked at it from a lens of voting safety on how we could apply it to what we have. So. Um, if you wanted to make a survey on uh looking at frog habitat in Oregon. Um, it would be very easy to take this and look at all the options within survey one three and adapt it to it. We just, we just took something that's a a software that that really. Um, is collecting data and then putting it into a form to view that data and we just applied it to voting safety voter contact. So. No, no reason to be copyrighted. If somebody wanted to go in and look at how we wrote this, it might be some challenges for them to try and copy it because. Uh, it took us a little bit of time and thought process, but. Overall, um, I'm not too concerned about. So we're going to talk about the dashboards, which quite honestly is my favorite part. You know, that that data collection and all the work that goes on in the field. It it gets put into this database that we get to look at visually and analyze and use in different ways. Now. Voter contacts, they're required for us to to gather. That's part of our recreational voting safety grant we get from the Coast Guard. Um, we just closed out the FY twenty three year. Um, and when we close out a year, we actually have to provide a uh. A statistical performance report to the Coast Guard every year, uh which which breakdown breaks down voter contacts. Um, I just got done running the numbers and 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 doing that report and. We implemented this statewide in April of this year. And just by those six months, uh, we had increased our voter contacts for that federal fiscal year over thirty three percent. So. The amount of voters that were were contacted this past year was significantly higher, um, over a third. And and a lot of it can be attributed to this program because it saves so much time at the field. It saves so much time in the office. So. So our law enforcement partners are able to spend more time on the water and educating more some things. So this is, I'm going to go over the dashboards. I took screenshots and I apologize if it's kind of small on the screen, but I'll I'll do my best to describe it. So when I, when I put together these dashboards, I I kind of wrote down the end products I wanted and then I worked with Joe in our office to create them and. And so all our marine law enforcement partners, they generally have a program manager. Now that program manager has one, two, three, four, five staff members that are out there in the field working every day. So I wanted a daily dashboard that a program manager or myself can open up. We could put in very specific times, whether I wanted to look at just, you know, a twenty four hour period. I wanted to look at a week period. Um, and then I could see what what my program was doing. It also allows me to look at specific water bodies, agencies. And it just does a a real quick overview. So it's going to show me. How many motorized and non-motorized contacts that were taken. You know, you can see on that right hand panel. Um, how many were passing warnings and citations. So this is a a screen that gives you a real quick overview. Um, I can zoom in on the map. Um, we've had have a setup so that actually clusters the voter contacts. So you can see each one of those little clusters, you know. Might say two hundred or something. That's that's going to be a better cluster out. If I want to throw on a layer showing individual county and the county borders on there, I have the ability to change the layers. I can change the base maps, you know, kind of that GIS feature that's pretty standard on most things. If I wanted to look at. A specific agency and then look at a specific water body, I can change that in the filter. Um, this specific example was looking at uh Lynn County was the agency. Uh, and Foster uh Lake is the the water body. So I can look there during that timeframe from April tenth through October tenth. There was seventeen hundred voter contacts specifically by Lynn County on Foster Lake. Um, you can see the amount of non-motorized and motorized right there. So it's a real quick way for me to analyze a certain water body. If I wanted to look at. Multiple agencies and look at a very specific water body, uh this being the Lammer River, Newport Pool, I I can look at that specific date. It shows the number of voter contacts and uh it shows the figures on the right. Uh, so it has a lot of, lot of options I can do specific to what I'm trying to analyze. And what we can do as well with this information is if someone. Or a county wants to host a special emphasis and that they need help, we can rewind, just pull a date, say July fourth, you know, twenty twenty three. And say, okay, on Foster, we have this many contacts. Yeah, that's a great time of year to do it. So we'll contact additional resources and we'll kind of focus. Knowing that in the years, there's absolutely trends that that body of waters could be busy. If I want to look at, like you said, I built Lammer River Newport Pool, very easy. If I want to look at the lower Lamont, I have it set as a water body. I can, I can look real, real quickly at the number of motorized and non-motorized contacts for that specific timeframe. If I'm coming into the office after a holiday weekend, say fourth of July, I can pull up, you know, the first, second, third, fourth of. July and see exactly how many voter contacts we made across the state. Um, I can see the proportion of warnings and citations. So really, it takes a big uh. Scope and looks at the data real quickly. Um, if I want to look at just Clackamas and I want to look at uh the upper Clackamas and those, I can. I can really start to see uh which agencies are are making, you know, a significant amount of voter contacts. So. Going back, we had almost thirty five thousand voter contacts for that that six month period. I put in there seventy one hundred of those were in Clackamas County. So you can see they did a huge portion of the voter contacts. Uh, compared to to other programs across the state. You can also see real quickly that over five thousand of those were non-motorized. Um, so it it really has a lot of value if you're trying to break things down. So that that's the, that's the daily dashboard, um, which is a real high level overview. And then we can go into the data evaluator. So. This is really where you can drill things down extremely specifically. So. Uh, we can go by date. We can go by if it was a citation, if there's a warning, it was passing. I can look at, you know, just citations and warnings. If I want to look at motorized versus non-motorized. Um, this past year, I've been been really specifically looking at live jacket wear rates on non-motorized boats. So we were collecting. What type of non-motorized boat it was. Uh, we had our our emphasis on, you know, the summer subs, you know, with standing paddleboard safety. So. It was important to me to kind of see what our live jacket, what wear rate was on that. So that's what we're collecting that. I can look at water body. I can look at marine patrol unit. I can look clear down if I want to see a specific officer in the voter contacts that they were making. Uh, we also have regions and districts in there that correlate. Generally to ODFW and and some of our hunting and fishing things that we do with them with Outfit or Guide Program. Uh, then I can go over and if I want to drill it down, I can. I can look at only voter contacts that were warned for a specific violation. I can look at um. Whether they were cited for a specific violation or I can look at a a. A combination of warnings. If so, if they were warned for a general live jacket and they were cited for a child live jacket, I can look at. You know, any of those combinations that I ever could think of, I could do that. If I had a customer call in and they had received a citation, I can actually search their citation number right there. It doesn't matter what county or if it was an OSP. I can look up their citation and know um. What the nature of that that violation was. Um, also, if I have a voter calling and maybe. Uh, they disagreed with their voter contact on the information they're given, I can look up their OR number and see who the officer was that talked to them. Maybe gather a little bit more information. Um, I can look up the R number. I can look up the HIN. Uh, if it's out of state, I can look up Washington. I can look up. Any of those out of state registration number voter contacts. So it really allows us to drill them in that in any way we want to, whether it's. Voting safety, if we wanted to look at water we use. You know, strategy for special emphasis, those type of things. And just for clarification, we can only look about state voters if they, if the their information was entered into this app. That doesn't mean we can't go in and just say, hey, let's look this person up. That that information has to be entered by the law enforcement into field maps or survey one two three.
I can't remember. Is there a field on there for designating if it's an outfitter guide? And can you, can you? Run all of those filters for those as well?
So we run our outfitter guide. So if it's a guide, vote examination report. We actually have a separate app for that. And the reason being is it asks. More specific questions for carriage requirements for an outfitter guide.
Okay.
Um, like commercial area credential, those type of things. So and and actually, when that specific. Uh, contact is completed, uh, our outfitter guide program coordinator gets an email with all the information. So. If law enforcement's out there and they do their own guide, we know about it because we get an email showing a specific example of whether they're in compliance or not. So that's, that's important for us to kind of, you know, understand what's going on out there.
And then that's retained with their with their records or do you?
Yeah, yeah, we can save that that as that email basically as a PDF and it goes into their files.
Pretty, you know, it's pretty amazing.
Yeah, and yeah, I think the the guide now in the app is is almost similar to survey one two three. It is through survey one two three and. Uh, I imagine that someday it'll be integrated into this a little bit more formally. Um, but right now. The volume of outfitter guide uh compliance checks that we do is fairly low. So in regards to the savings of the administrative burden, we've we've chosen just keep it with its own separate app right now.
And what was great about this data evaluator is is program managers, as Brian was saying, go in, say they were off for three days, they come in, access this. Pinpointing their marine deputies that work within that county and see where they were patrolling and then kind of iron out in the next week's, you know, detail. Say, okay, well, you are on the Clackamas River for three days. So why don't we go to the Malala or whatever the case is. So. Program managers have really taken advantage of this tool. It's exciting to hear.
And and it is mobile enabled. It's much easier to filter through all this on a. Desktop, but I can look at things on my cell phone. So if I'm out in the field and I wanted to see. Maybe who was the work of marine patrol nearby that day and I can see what contacts they've done, I have the ability to do that. When we were out doing a special assistance patrol in September in uh Lincoln County, I was on a specific waterway. Was OSP and I could look at where everybody else was at making contacts that day on my phone, see what was going on. So. There there's a lot of ways to utilize that technology. We keep learning more and more. So the the bird data evaluator, you know, I I have all these things that I can drill down right here. And then what what I've done is I've made it so it's really easy for me to see some numbers that are that are total. So. When I put those filters in up top, which those filters right now are just the that six month time period and and no additional items. I can see the total of non-motorized versus motorized voters. So it's going to show that pie chart and then it shows the total numbers. Um, if we were on the dashboard and I hovered my mouse over a specific part of the pie chart, it doesn't actually tell me the percentage. It'll show to the right the actual status. So whether it was a passing, failing, or failed with citation verb. Uh, if I want to export this into a spreadsheet, I have. Different uh data formats that I can export it. I can also. Reduce the amount of columns that I have. So if I want to not know specific information uh that's exported out, um, I can do that. So there's really a lot of. Uh, ways that if I need to look at that in Excel and and analyze it more statistically, I could. So it does have that option. Uh, one thing that I've always been a a overall. Fan of is friendly competition. So, you know, the marine law enforcement partners, they look at how many contacts they're doing compared to other people. So I I basically created the thing that showed the top fifteen water bodies. Um, just a quick bar graph so they can see which water bodies are getting the most voter contacts throughout the state. Uh, as you can see here, the lower Lamont had the most. Contacts of any water body that goes Hagley, Foster Lake, uh, Lammer River, actually Corvallis to Salem. So I did the same thing for marine patrol units. So you can see the total voter contacts for marine patrol units. So you can see. Their Clackamas, Lynn County, Lincoln County, Lynn County, uh, and so forth. That's a list based on the total number of uh voter contacts completed. And that's purely based on on those filters that I had inputted up top. So if I. If I want to change those filters to look at, say, a specific water body up top and then look at what was the total number of. Voter contacts that that marine patrol unit made for that specific water body, I can do that. Or if I wanted to look at. Uh, only citations or warnings. So I have the ability to change all those and look at it per the marine patrol unit or water body for that. Quickly with a bar graph instead of looking at something um. More complicated. And then the other thing I have is is a. Chart showing the most common violation warnings. Um, and like I said earlier, I can hover over the actual. Part of the pie chart and it'll tell me um. The the percentage. So twenty percent of the the warnings in the state were for a live jacket. Uh, for for that town here that I put in, uh, waterway access uh permits are slightly lower than that. Uh, for warnings total for the state. And then looking at citations, it's going to show me the the percentage of citations for that filter. Um, and I can hover over those as well. You can see the majority for live jackets. Any questions? Lot of information.
So you're looking at motorized and non-motorized. Can you break it down any further?
Yeah. Remember with the, I actually put a scenario in here because I wanted to kind of show. Kind of that whole number we could look at and then if we wanted to break it down further. So this this scenario, which we'll go through. Um, I looked at that six month period, April to October. I looked at all uh statuses, failed, failed with warning, passing. But I looked at just non-motorized in Clackamas County, which. If you look at that none of this, at that six month period, it's almost six thousand voter contacts that were non-motorized by Clackamas County. Which you put that in perspective, that's seventeen percent of all voter contacts in the state. Were non-motorized voters in Clackamas County that were completed in that six month period. So it's. That's a pretty large sample size of of non-motorized voters that are for those voter examination reports. Um, looking at kind of the general area, you can see uh that that aerial base map that actually clusters it. Clusters it together. So you can see uh certain parts of the Clackamas River. You can see the lower Lamont. Um, actually Timothy Lake, you can see there kind of the lower uh right hand part of the map. So there's. You you can see quite a large area of use, um, but definitely some concentrated use of non-motorized. Uh, boats in Clackamas County. And then it shows over here, you know, the amount, you know, in a pie graph of actually passing, um, failed with warning and citation. And it's hard to see too with the those little dots up there. There's numbers on those on those dots, remember with you. So. If we were to zoom in, you can see that, you know, within this certain section of of river, there was one thousand contacts and then a mile down river, there was nine hundred and seventy two. So we can rarely pinpoint full occasions. There's one cluster there that's. Eleven hundred and I would take a guess that's probably us to Canada.
Eleven hundred and I would take a guess, that's probably Estacada Lake, um just based on kind of knowing the geography of Clackamas. So. It's, it has the ability, you can zoom in, you can see, and actually I'll show you a little bit later here. How we can drill into very specifically on where the the location of the voter contact is on the.
Um, so looking, you know, that that filter I put in, you know. We looked at visually where all those voter contacts were, but if I want to look at it in a bar graph and breaking down my water body for Clackamas County non-motorized. You can see that twenty-six hundred of those contacts were on the lower Willamette. Uh, thousand forty-two were on Estacada Lake, then a thousand on Timothy Lake and then North Fork Resort. So it breaks down. What the top fifteen water bodies were for that specific county.
I I think that um Craig was trying to figure out if you could actually drill down to the specific type of non-motorized boat. So can you, can you filter it by, you know, SUVs and kayaks and?
Remember, when you you can't. So we can drill down by kayak, by raft, by standard paddleboard or by jet boat on this specific.
Can you do that with motorized boats? Like, can you identify where it means yet to our B Ds?
Uh, if we ask law enforcement to collect that through the survey, if I had that an option, we could, but right now we don't.
We have that, I have.
The. The number of types of motorized boats is significantly more uh. Than what the non-motorized voters were focusing on from safety from this last year. But if there was ever. Ever a notion to want to collect specifically the type of motorized boat, we could. The beauty of that is we can add that that field really quickly in the survey.
You got a huge database here and you're looking at it from a law enforcement perspective. But obviously you you use for other things like facility needs, like.
Absolutely.
Additional rules. So I I don't think you developed that yet, but I I could see the potential to expand it into those areas.
I imagine that uh there's managers in the room, their wheels are starting to turn on how they use this data. And then there's another notes section too, remember with you. So after they make, before they get sent, after completing a bird, there's a note box. And some of the notes are are fantastic, the feedback and their contact with this person uh because of this reason and this is the type of boat they were on. Um, so those notes are valuable information for us.
So from what you're saying, I tell you, law enforcement is really fine with this.
I I think so, so far. And again, we've we've gotten pushback. Um, but we're not printing these anymore. So that's that's the bottom line. And as long as, but what I've found is they can make it work for themselves, meaning. Um, some people, it's hard for them to look or see an iPhone just with their site, so they purchase iPads, you know, and they use iPads. And so that's, I think outside the box, it's just how they can work. But yeah, when we rolled this out in April, we had probably. Six weeks of constant, constant phone calls and then. Pushed back and then I I think once it rolled around after July four or August first, it was, it was just smooth sailing.
And they're saying it really increased the number of uh. Contacts that are being made, which people put fear pressure on people where that aren't making very many contacts because they can see what others are doing.
I think, I think there's a lot of benefits for the transparency piece of this. There's, there's certain law enforcement partners that use it as a measurable. If they embrace it, then I know that it's being successful. And and it was definitely uh. An eye opener to see some of the folks that I thought that would be resistance to this, all of a sudden being super users and head. And I could see where they're making better contacts and I was like, I never even knew there were voters there. Um, so that's, that's the the really nice thing is, you know, you mentioned water we use. We're seeing voters contacted places that I never knew that was 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 going and speaking to voters about, but it's safe.
So your intent is to sit down with law enforcement and go through a lot of this data so they can see what's happening out there.
So uh when we do contracts and kind of that action plan, we talk about um. The data that they've been collecting and we actually this past year required our law enforcement partners to do a performance report. Very similar to how the Coast Guard does to us. And it's been a valuable tool for us to sit down and and use that. Uh, for enforcement plans, those second things.
So in some cases, we're contracting through law enforcement, we're requiring them to use this too, or?
It, this is a requirement in their contract for them.
That super user group we created, remember with me, there was, there were, I won't name what counties, but there were some counties. That we specifically wanted to be in a super user group because I knew we were already getting pushback. I a hundred percent knew it was going to be shown. There's no way this is going to work. And incorporating them to the user group, uh they're actually, one of those counties is one of our top performers right now. So, yeah, this was great. Well.
So the the data, you know, the the bird data evaluator provides a real quick overview. We talked about the. See the bar graphs and the water bodies specific to the filters. And then once again, you can come down here and see that on those non-motorized in Claxton County, uh forty-seven percent of the warnings were for life jacket. Uh, and then for citations, every single citation they wrote to non-motorized was specifically for life jacket violation. Now, going back to the the bird data about it and all those filters that we talked about. Now we have the option of clicking by the numbers. So if you don't want to see those click visuals that I showed. You can hit click EBR data about the numbers and it's going to pull up basically. Uh, this table set that I created that shows, one is going to show the date range, the total number of voter contacts. And then it's going to show uh the ten most common violations. So it shows that the most common violation for for the entire state. Uh, out of those thirty-five thousand voter contacts were for sound signaling device, then uh just. Barely underneath that is life jacket, waterway access permit, uh validation sticker. So you can see what those top ten violations are. Purely based on on those filters that I inputted. You can see registration violations, um. Safety equipment, uh regulations, um operational violations. You can see guide charters. So. Um, if there's any specific violations for guides, that's going to build into the data set. Uh, it's got to the water sports. Everything is there violation wise, which it it gives us, you know, a real easy way to see what those numbers are. Uh, any questions regarding the the bird data evaluator and that piece of the dashboard? So now we're going on to what's my favorite part of our dashboard. Uh, and I had an epiphany probably like in July of something that I could. Quickly see what compliance is and I could drill it down to look at areas that we wanted to do heightened awareness. Um, areas that the compliance was uh more challenging. So. This is our compliance map. I created kind of like a heat map, so greens, passing, yellows, uh. A violation with a warning and reds a citation. So I can quickly just bring this up. Uh, and then I have the ability to break it down, you know, in the in the filters like we have before. Now. The one nice thing is there, you could take away. So if you want to just look at violations, so you don't want to look at any of the the. The voters that are compliant, you want to just look at voters that are non-compliant, I can quickly show them that out. Or if I want to just look at where the citations are throughout the state, the state, and then um I can zoom in from there. Now, I have, you know, interested parties that that write to me about different things and different data points all the time. So what I built into this compliance map is I have favorites. And I say favorites, like I can zoom into a very specific window and a very specific water body and then I can. Um, label it and then it allows me to just click that label and automatically pulls everything up for me. So if I have very specific things that I want to look at, look at a water body, it instantly is going to bring it up for me. Uh, which for me, it saves me a lot of time, but it also allows me to see that data real quickly. For for instance, this specific, I look at um compliance on the Willamette River. Uh, I can look at any, any kind of water body. So Detroit, um I can quickly pull that up if I want to pull up Lake of the Woods. Which uh has been an area that we've had some compliance challenges this last year. Uh, so you can see, you know. Uh, a lot of value in just quickly being able to filter through all these water bodies for compliance. If I want to look at Fourth of July weekend. And I wanted to just go through all those water bodies real quickly and and kind of see where our safety concerns or compliance, I can quickly do that from this dashboard. Now, what's really neat, if you want to look at it from a a use standpoint. Uh, or compliance standpoint, is I can look at non-motorized versus motorized. And when you start looking at. Different water bodies, you can start to see where motorized voters vote the most versus non-motorized on certain water bodies. Uh, you can see where there's congregation of native voters that don't follow the rules so much. Uh, there really is a lot of value in this data. And prior to this system, we can never visually see where voter contacts were. It's literally a stack of paper. Or an entry into some type of Excel table. So, so the geospatial part of this program uh. Really allows us to look at things from not only voting safety standpoint, but even the water we use standpoint.
That's, that's pretty exciting though, because now you can see where the conflicts are. Now you can see, you know, during a time period where there, you know, possible conflicts between user groups.
Exactly. And on this specific water body, Lake of the Woods, in the board book, it did have a picture of a. An informational sign that we put out this summer and it was uh. Us being proactive on on an educational component with the user group. And we took this data visually and saw where the compliance challenges were and where voter use was and we applied that to that sign that we created. On that recommended uh activity on that water body. So. Then there's a lot of things that we use it for, not just for the the law enforcement. Uh, if we wanted to look at, uh, you know. It's got this warning, motorized versus non-motorized, I can put them side by side real quickly like that. And if I want to look at where the citations are and and really where those are congregated, I can do that as well. You can see certain parts of that. That water body never really sees non-motorized voters often. And so that's, that's one thing that that we look at.
Longer uses, we're going to do the pie charts.
So and then talking about um looking at the the actual specifics of a violation or or quite honestly, a compliance check. I can click on any one of these dots and it's going to pull up the OR number. It's going, excuse me, to pull up the the marine patrol unit, the officer, the citation, all of those.
On the bottom of this box, remember with you is uh. There's a comment section. So there's that note section I was telling you about that they law enforcement entered information in and it says. Short two PFDs cited for both, slow no make violations, no vote and card, or no vote and no sound. So no sound device. So that's, you know, so this is probably Corporal Craig, Craig County, he put that in a note section.
The other. No, the other piece is you can see on this voter contact, yes, they were cited, but they also were warned for other violations. So. Uh, I talked earlier about breaking that down in the last few days. And then we can, like I said earlier, we can really break it down, non-motorized versus motorized use, um and compare those. Uh, you know, looking at. Failed with citation, failed with warning, passing. I looked at uh non-motorized and I pulled up a certain part of the state. That I was, I was scrolling around on my heat map and saw a certain part of the state that was almost all yellow, right? There was hardly any compliant voters in this area. There was no citations. And so. What I did was kind of drill it down real quick. So I wanted to determine, you know, what's going on with voters in this specific area. And what I saw was the non-motorized voters, uh significant amount of them were non-compliant. As you can see, there's a whole lot of yellow, not a lot of green. Um, and you can see this specific region that I just scanned into. Fifty-five percent of the voters, non-motorized, that did not have a waterway access permit. Sixty-three percent did not have a life jacket and seventy-six percent did not have a whistle. So. One thing, you know, anecdotally, we've seen is if you have a waterway access permit, you generally have a life jacket and a whistle. Uh, they kind of go hand in hand with compliance. Um, this particular area kind of adds to that, that. That those folks, you know, fifty-five percent of them didn't have a waterway access permit, which then we saw elevated violations of life jacket and whistle. So that's safety.
And that was, that one was specific to SUVs.
Uh, yes, yes, thank you, uh Chair Jackson. I I did uh break that one down here on the on the top part. So that was non-motorized. Uh, looking at all bird statuses. So if there was any red citations or any green. That should show prominently, but you can see there's a whole lot of voters that are that failed with warning being yellow. Uh, that was non-motorized and specifically standard paddleboards. Um, and that was specifically the marine patrol unit being mischievous company.
And what's, what's neat about this is the whistle violation, it's almost an out of monopia because. Um, if they were contacting the shoots and if they go hypothetical Clackamas County. And Clackamas County says, or that individual says, well, I was contacting this county and they let me off with a warning. That's when they go to the field maps, first name, last name, and they get that information and see that there's. Other capability right there. So it's a big tool.
Um, any questions with the compliance map before I move forward? So another part of the dashboards, uh I can really drill down on life jacket compliance. Uh, obviously, life jackets, huge contributor uh to safety uh. Time and time again, eighty percent of the voting fatalities in the state were can be attributed for somebody not wearing a life jacket. So. Looking up that compliance data, drilling it down by time of year, by water body, type of boat. Um, this, this part of the dashboard allows us to look at. Um, how many, you know, violations involve the life jacket, we can look at. The total warnings, we can look at, was it a wearable, was it throwable, was it child, was it class three white water? So. This, this part of the dashboard is is very centric to life jacket compliance. Um, and and something that that we can look at, you know, for certain areas and and put together control strategies. Now, within this dashboard for our law enforcement partners, we have creative resources. Now. Say we have a law enforcement partner that doesn't attend academy or maybe we have somebody that promotes out and somebody that. Has gone through our marine law enforcement academy, say, two, three years ago, uh comes back for the free program. We have the ability to teach them how to use survey one, two, three very quickly and efficiently. So we've created this user guide within the dashboards and it is very intuitive. So. The user guide will show them how to use survey one, two, three. It'll show them how to use field maps, how to use that that offline features. It also shows them actually how to use the dashboards itself. So we built this in like a story map format. So that, say I click on survey one, two, three, I need to learn how to use it as a, as a. Um, marine law enforcement officer is going to walk me through how to input that voter contact. So. The reason we created this resource is as new folks come into programs, they can go on here and be taught everything that we would have taught them at Academy. Um, and so it's, it really is kind of a self-service thing for them. Obviously, they can call us because we're a resource, but we wanted to make sure we had consistent training on this uh for our law enforcement partners. So. This, this story map and this resource is built into the dashboard so that they can go through it. And maybe they, maybe they're a seasonal program and they forgot how to use it over the winter, they can come back and freshen up on it as well.
And the Joe can also go in after a training event and delete all those birds. So for example, during Academy, if we have four hundred birds like Billy Chinook, after that last day of Academy, Joe goes in there and deletes every single one of them, which which keeps our information clean.
So would the idea be that you could actually shorten Academy by having them do this prior to Academy? Um, go through the step by step and learn the EBR program?
Yeah, exactly. So what we did is, if I'm perfectly correct, it's very, very wrong, this, this user guide was not available for this year's Academy. Had to build this yet. Now, this is something we built up over the summer. Yes, so.
Remember you talked about that at Jet, so.
Right. So so this will definitely save time in classroom because our classroom portion is already packed. So this is, so we'll push this out to the people enjoying Academy ahead of time. Make it downloaded, make sure the app is downloaded, here's the user guide, know how to use it and obviously they'll answer any questions. But yeah, this is definitely a time savings.
Any questions about our L E dashboard before I come up in then, how we apply this to voting safety advocates? So voting safety advocates uh is a program that we've had in place. We we have seasonal positions now that. That started in in early August. And prior to them starting, I took everything that I've learned from the EBR system over the last two years. And I wanted to build an app similar to that for.
So, quick question. Is there plans in the future to integrate the BSA, the outreach guide and the EBR into a consolidated dashboard to be able to look at that?
I didn't.
You can't? Okay.
Okay. So apparently watching um, the live feed of this, we had a technical difficulty. We took a couple minute break. No decisions or anything were made during that time and we're back to the Brian.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. So wanted to, to briefly talk about how we our, our EBR onset from our law enforcement service combined for our voting safety advocates. So our voting safety advocates and how they're feeling. Um, they're, they're making contacts with voters and what a great opportunity for them to find some information for us uh, about the voter. So we, we also wanted a, a simple way to collect our outreach activities. So when I, when I sat down and I put together this, this plan on creating a voting safety advocate, survey I want to contribute eventually, I want to provide voter contact information. I want to collect education outreach. So um, very easy, easy sample survey. And that was the first thing you use. We choose that this is the voter contact or education reach. Um, and then they go through a dropdown. It is very similar uh, to, to what we were describing earlier. Now I created a dashboard. I will tell you that um, this is a dashboard that's kind of revolving. This is very basic right now. Um, as we collect more data uh, through the rest of this season and into next, you know, other seasons, voting safety advocates, I imagine I'll start to build out this dashboard a little bit more complex, sort of like a cargo office. But what this will do is quickly land that the number of voter contacts are sort of average. Now this, this, you know, data sent, this program was rolled out in the data office. So right now there's some huge numbers coming in uh, just because the program is so new and how reflecting data. But uh, if you look at the voter contacts, you can see the motorized versus non-motorized contacts. You can see the total education events that we've been to. Uh, you can look at the amount of hours uh, on those, those education events. And, and then the actual outreach type, whether it's voting safety, civic or water boats. Just a real quick tool for me to, to look at those things. Uh, the one thing I really enjoy is if I have voting safety advocates around or feel that day, I can see where they're actually doing the work. So I can see where they're for that time period, important waterway. Uh, maybe I can touch anyone that I launch and, and, and give it a long, well, I, I know the voters are going to be uh, you know, uh, higher used during this time period than I can see. I can see that education fails. So this specific dashboard, it looks at um, what kind of education is the agency sponsored? Is this a classroom? Um, this is a community. It's a non-governmental organization sponsored. Uh, I can drill down these minutes now with my, I can put this for the, you know, uh, stretch out to get everything out of voting minutes. Uh, this keeps it hidden, it's a little bit, one and two, three, some of the forwards, three, with their voting safety advocates. So this, this is full of avenues. This is keep growing. Uh, it looks at the hour, long game, hours wise. It looks at um, you know, what the attendance was, the age of the attendance, and then uh, we, we input their comments. Uh, and now voting safety advocates, the, the seasonal or, or candidates. Now we do have a contracted voting safety advocate that has the ability on a personal water path to make on water contacts. Um, so I look at this specific uh, dashboard. It shows all of the voter contacts that are voting safety advocates. I can also look at um, a little bit of things there. But I think it, uh, to excuse me, this, this slide is a little bit, you know, um, or I just want to equip it to show you the actual things we're collecting about motorized votes. We're collecting the type of vote. So that's going to be consistent with um, boat types. The coast guard has stuff we collect. It's also consistent with boat types that are on our, our voter uh, user radar now. Whether they have a sound signal in the vics or not, whether they visually have valid registration. Um, the life jacket carries. So whether all were or not were or some that are required or and then what was the life jacket where, where? So whether none was wearing, some of those, all were wearing, children not wearing, it has every, every single scenario of the life jacket wear. Or that's specifically motorized, so that the, the voting safety advocates have your safety conversation about. Um, do the same thing for the non-motorized. Uh, the only difference with the non-motorized is if there's uh, standard paddleboard, it has an additional dropdown and that acts as a, they have the appropriate needs to that activity. So with the non-motorized, it was the, the kind of type, uh, third down to the raft, standard paddleboard, new user, kaya. If it's a school toy, they're marking that. Um, the waterway access permit, you can see almost half the, the, the non-motorized voters of voting safety advocates. Talk to the last set of ones that have a waterway access permit. So they're educating them about that. Uh, you can see life jacket uh, for ratings for about eighty percent that all were wearing. So there, there's a lot of information that they're collecting and it has to be a large, those technical sizes that are really interesting to start recording trains. Cause I can break down my specific waterway. I can really drill down where this is going to be. And then oh, okay, I have the four X. The, the other piece is I can break down my specific water body as I was just talking about. So you can see this is not entering, entering highway specifically. And you can see where our voting safety advocate is actually making contact with voters at the facilities and, and having conversations with voters about safety. And you can see specifically on uh, how like uh, the, the tighter boats, you know, almost three bird lovers standing outwards, which is pretty significant. And if you, you drive around that highway, turn around that uh, the summer, most of the balls succeed people with the cargo trucks open and putting ratings in the background. So it's really important that we, we get out of that problem. The other piece is you can see how voters didn't have all our parents. So it's a mixture of people out of the sky. By mentioning that voting safety advocate moment in the.
How many do we have now?
Never really knew. We've already made out of four seasonal voting safety advocates. They started uh, in early August. We did a two week orientation. And they worked till the summer of fifteen and then they will come back on April first uh, through September. So the, the six month saving period, they will be uh, starting next year. It will, will better align with voting season. You know, this, this, this current season that we're in was a little bit more challenging to align on sort of that the binding for any question, I just.
So how do you determine where you're going to put them?
So if I, if I could put voting safety advocate strategically across the state, there's very specific areas. However, getting a recruitment for those specific areas are a little bit more challenging. I'm very confident that this next year, because I can start a recruitment uh, more of the folks looking for summer jobs, looking for um, that type of work. Uh, will be easier to place in parts of the state where there's higher.
So are you going to use some of this data to determine where they're needed?
I am always looking at that in the neighborhood. I think, I think the, the piece there is uh, recruiting good candidates, you know, in the, the voting safety advocate program. We have, you know, five seasonal that will be hiring for this next year. We've learned a lot honestly over the last three months with the, the current program. Um, we, we put some really good processes in place. We put some uh, tent plays together on, on how we contact uh, organizations, the events, schools. We have really specific debriefs we do on events. Uh, we're taking pictures of our, our displays. Um, I'm really confident that going into this next year, we, we really kind of got a solid to go fast. And, and I'm, I know that we're going to be able to make a future happen next year.
So where were this year?
So apparently we have a voting safety advocate in Banksaring who, who uh, specifically really utilized the fall off of the river for High Lake and then Needharts, uh, Halum, uh, Gerber, Aldi. We have a voting safety advocate that is uh, based out of Silverton, which uh, makes contacts in the lower Wem, in the Rockpool, Walla, Sandy, Silverton, Dallas, or Detroit. And then we have two voting safety advocates that are general sale area uh, that that actually cover a lot of ways to Hoover, um, Detroit, clear down Eugene and kind of the more valley area.
Thank you. Before we move on, I was thinking of giving a direct report tomorrow on the BSA positions. And seems like after this discussion, that actually is probably a good time to just also talk about um, the position adjustment, if only it was halftime and moved to full time and how it integrates with BSA. It's just because it's on or on. There's no action items on it. So I think it'd be good for this discussion. That's a great report. Yeah. If Ryan, if you want to talk about redeploy, it's really exciting. And we've been able to take somebody who was really the foundation, was now the BSA working full-time position for however.
Yeah, thank you, Artorn. So uh, the, the voting safety advocates are recognized as, uh, the, the overall scope and I rarely like to mention, uh, the voting safety coordinator has risen to the level where our program coordinator was really advantageous. And uh, Justin had been uh, part of the always the H coordinator for the last year at halftime. And then with the, the policy, I was trying to move that up the whole time. He was able to transition into voting safety advocate coordinator coordinator with a lot of the skill sets that he's learned over the last year in the preliminary, the events that he's worked at. Most of his really uh, came into the, the position uh, with the water and A S Ts connected with voting safety advocates. They, they're actually going out and field uh, really early this week as a team. And, and really start to integrate the things that you learned in the preliminary and the work base with the voting safety advocates. And put together those processes and creating um, a different outreach, starting a chasing and.
So you'll still be able to, some of it, but it will also be helping to coordinate some of that, I really had asked about. Where do they go? Some of that will be helping you do that. Some of the training, still doing some outreach. It's just a really um, nice use of that. And then in terms of state government, uh, human resources. His position is classed a little higher than the voting safety advocates. So let's just put him into that coordinator role where he can really help take what he's built and then help us build BSA.
What's the plan for them to work with law enforcement? Are they going to go to some of the law enforcement training and meetings so they understand the issues?
Never really, the, the voting safety advocates are very different than law enforcement. Uh, however, one of the things that's been really important for me uh, in, in what I've done with our very voting safety advocates is to introduce law enforcement, especially in the area of them working. So that one law enforcement knows the type of work that they're doing. Uh, they also can partner up like state law enforcement is contacted by a school about a certain event or those type of things. And law enforcement partners pass that on to voting safety advocate. That's really the capacity that they work on. It's, it is more of just sort of knowing where they're at with the community and what they can provide each other.
I totally applaud what you're doing there. I think they're really important in supporting the voting community across the state. So I really applaud what you're doing.
I just, if I could follow up Chair Jackson, then get this looks again. I just would add, I think I had some concerns initially how law enforcement would receive the voting safety advocates. So it was interesting as, as the program was journeying to develop and even back when, um, boy, his name's gave me and then Justin.
Luke.
Look, Ethan. Ethan. Uh, some of it, and then Justin took, took on that role. How some of the law enforcement community was asking, when can we get a BSA in our? I thought that was a sign we've done a good job of, of helping them understand sort of the roles and how they're different, work together versus uh, what we did in law was for their satisfaction. It's a replacement. This is really different.
Well, definitely I spent with law enforcement. They spend uh, most of their time educating the voters. So if you have a safety advocate pick to take that piece off their shoulders, I think they would really support the program. So I can understand where they're coming from when they walk on.
To kind of play my coaching, then I'll ask my question.
Sure.
Um, I mean, the thing that I noticed about like the FAs is as a non-motorized user, it's still a pack of intimidating things to have. So they come out in a big motorboat to talk to you about your BSA or whatever you want to talk to you about. Whereas some, and especially having asked some of the FAs, their whole personality is to meet around the way they're first to take a truck because they're not in a big boat. They're not in a uniform. It's like, hey, can I talk to you for a minute? And it's, it's a, it's a more um, social way of getting to some of the people that you may not otherwise get to in a meaningful way. And then maybe specifically about some of the more emotional factors that stand aboard people. The ones that I've met anywhere are just a lot more, it's not as like scary and intimidating as having law enforcement. So it takes the load off of the law enforcement people. But I think it also gives the message to the people that you're getting the message. So thanks for that comment, Chris. The question I was going to ask is um, it sounds like there's just all kinds of real amazing stuff going on with this. I, as I mentioned, I would love to see somebody in bend this part of the time because there's some real scary stuff going on over there. Um, can we, from one of our company meetings, maybe have a little more detailed discussion or presentation on like what adjustments did this patch or what did you learn? And also that how does that translate into growing the BSA program and the heating for BSA program?
With Chair Jackson, I think we had queued up uh, voting safety advocate on the agenda in the morning. And what I think that I'm really precisely with Justin for something on what it sounds like this year. So that's, I mean, it definitely accommodate that. Uh, the other piece I would add is we saw in this presentation, I showed it to you. You know, that bend area that had a lot of non-compliance, standard paddles. So there's, there's definitely areas in the state that I can look at. Standard paddleboard. So there's there's definitely areas in the state that I can look at. Really understand that voting safety advocates.
So I just was confirming Chair Jackson. Then in January, we had a BSA statistic update. But we'll change that title to make sure we capture what I think you're wanting.
More of the statistics.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, Chair, I think one of the key lines, we get states and we ask the way we stay everyone's business. That's just very about technology and BSA and law enforcement, the education, which is all about the state.
Anybody else have any questions?
One more. Do we have any idea for the percentage of? The voter contacts? For the overall voter use? So.
So. We're really, so I guess statistically, we do like the number of registered voters, sorry. And I feel like I have the number of motorized voter contacts for that time period and how we can understand if. Voters that we contacted for that specific kind of period. I. I don't know that I'm not a fan of it, but I.
I just was thinking more of the the fuel use. For future, you know, looking at looking at the the fuel usage for both. Based on the percentage of the contacts made on a water body.
I'm finding me out. So. The purpose of this server, I think there's always going to be other drivers to look for cash. Whether it's a baseline to their data, whether it's to to look at use, you know, I think there's there's a lot of all those things that. So the majority of projects are not sure how to.
Okay. Any other questions?
Excellent. Thank you so much. Yeah, excellent.
Appreciate it.
So with that, I think we're going to close our work session.